Alright, thanks everyone for showing up. I have one thing under additions and deletions. It's been asked to put this on the new business. It's the Better Roads Invoicing Spreadsheet. So I look for a motion.
I'll make the motion.
There a second for discussion?
Bob seconded it. He beat me. Gotta be fast.
I know, it's tonight, yeah. And we're gonna put that under new business. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Is there any other agenda additions or deletions?
Do we need a executive session to finalize the mod beds afterwards, or?
No, we could do this.
Say it in public?
We can do it in public. Alright, I'd look for a motion for the December 9th minutes approval.
Make a motion, subject to any corrections anybody may have found, but I'll make a motion to approve them.
Alright, is there any corrections or deletions? Anybody see anything?
I didn't see nothing.
Nope, nothing to me.
Good to be in.
Yeah, good job.
Eight plus, there you go.
Eight plus, got an eight plus on that one. All those in favor of the motion, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Alright. Highway, Road Commissioner report.
Just for an update on Gorge Road. Working with the state, Kyle Wells. They're looking at doing some work up there, the airport section of it. Around mid-January, first January to mid-January. And also, after many lengthy phone conversations, they're now gonna repair the Gorge Road itself. So it won't be on the town's residents, taxpayers of the town on that part.
I for one wanna say Cash, good job for writing that as long as you have. And Mike's been a part of the conversations, I think, too. But to the two of you, you are owed a thank you at this Christmas time that you're giving the taxpayers a Christmas present of not having to pay for that. So you guys are owed a big thanks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Cash. You worked hard on it.
Good work, buddy.
Awesome.
On the other note, change subject here. Truck number 14, the one we're talking about replacing, is at this time that Clerks International getting repaired. It had a hard start problem. And the diagnosed of it was that it's a, the oil pump with the internal. And they can get the pump in and install it. And the total bill for installation is gonna be $4,060. So this is why we have to seriously look at how much money we wanna put into some of these trucks. That's why I'm pursuing the replacement for that truck because we're starting to have issues with it. And we don't wanna go down the same road that has been in the past before my time with the 2012, 2006, 2007 truck.
Now is this a conversation, Cash, that we wanna have before we locate this coming budget? Or is this a conversation that we'll have after the voters vote in March?
Of what? Of replacement?
Yeah.
This is... We've already started, this is the one we've already started talking about in budget. And doing a split payment of 2019, right at June 30th, 2020, and do it within a two-day period. Polling from the 2019 and budget and plus the 2020.
I just want voters to know that we had this, started this discussion. And because a lot of our budgets are not recorded, so I just, in case people wanna know what's going on with the trucks.
And in replacement, we're, and it's only in the very early stages of planning and stuff and getting bids or whatever. But we're also looking at going to a small tandem truck. There's a few reasons for that. One being a tandem is more resalable at sale time than the single axles, which are, we are trading in the single axle. And also, with a tandem, it leaves more of a footprint for being safer on the road. And the tandem, the small tandem, if we do buy it, will have a wing on it also, which the single axle does not have. So be totally outfitted, same as the two tandems we have now, with a smaller box to carry a payload almost to the capacity of the two tandems we already have. Being just a two foot shorter box for turning radius.
More efficient around some of the back roads, right?
Yeah, cuz that truck's up in Chippenhoke on the back roads and...
Anything else?
Well, that's all I have right here.
I have one question on the Gorge Road. You and I discussed this briefly. And I don't know if you've given some more thought that when, whenever they have Markowski over there doing that work, that the state wants to get done. Is there a possibility that that one big covert that's more towards the town hall here, if we could get Markowski to give us a bid on it?
I contacted Greg and Tom Markowski, and they were more than glad to give us a bid on it. I'm supposed to meet him next week sometime about that. Long they're right there, they have the equipment there. And that project there, we could actually do some of the hauling of materials in and out with their own, our own town trucks helping cost down.
Good, sounds good.
So, and that covert's quite a, it's gonna be quite a job because of location and the size of it.
Is that the one kinda before you dropped down over to the flat?
Exactly, the one that comes out of the industrial part by the country store.
Okay, yep.
Some of that relief lot.
They have to chip some stone through there.
Well, yeah. There might be some, that's good because they could actually bring a hammer, you know, a hammer on the excavator if needed.
Yep. Do you have anything else?
That's all I have.
Anybody have any questions for?
Cash, just a quick question going back to the truck. You're looking at Western Star? I know you're gonna look at the bid, but...
We're gonna look at Western Star, too.
Lean that way, if possible.
And actually, we're gonna price out International just for a numbers thing to see where they're at and go from there. International apparently has changed motors and stuff. But the cab design and stuff isn't quite as user-friendly either. And the value is, resale value on them, it's gonna be hard to tell what they're gonna hold in the future, even though if they're a tandem.
Okay.
I did have one other question. I had gotten a call from Gail Yellum about the end of her driveway there.
Her driveway.
And she's wondering if it'd be more responsible for us to put a covert in there under that driveway so that the, because it acts like a dam right now, she's saying.
Yep. Actually, I'd already had a conversation with her about that. We'll probably get somebody like Beldon or somebody to come in with a hammer on the end of the excavator. And it'll be a day job of smashing out some ledge here to put a covert in there. Improvements we made already there is really working out well. And that will finish that project and complete it as a whole. But we didn't know how that would work the way we did leave it. And we were figuring it bottlenecked there.
Yeah. She did also want me to let you know that it is working really well. Except for where the driveway is. Alright, anybody else have anything?
One other quick question for you, Cash. Maybe you can't answer it all. Status on the sewer problem on these Clarendon Road?
We actually did a site visit on that. Glad you brought that up, 'cause I forgot to, with Mr. Griffin. And we actually knocked on the door and had a discussion, slight discussion, with one that, I don't know if it was a tenant or young fellow he was. And he explained that he was working with a, one of the sewer companies in Clarendon here. So we contacted them. They're looking at, he said to us that we needed, they needed to put in a D-box to continue the project. And that hasn't happened yet. So we reached out to the company in Rutland that's doing the work at Clarendon here. And they said the same thing, that they're gonna install a D-box. But I don't know. I just left it at that. I don't know if there's a financial thing beyond that point or whatever.
Okay.
We'll keep following that in.
So far, the waste isn't coming into the road, but the odor is something else there. Even on the cold days.
I'm surprised the state, the state has sent some folks down to look at it, too. But I'm surprised if it's that bad that they haven't told those people they gotta get out of the house until it's fixed. So we'll...
Well, maybe the house doesn't, it doesn't back up in the house. And that's not an issue for as the state's concerned. We'll find out, probably it'd be an environmental issue come spring when the snow melts.
Anybody have anything else? Ward, do you have anything? Moving right along.
Thanks, Cash.
You're welcome, Bob.
We don't have a guest tonight. Our warrants are right here, if anybody wants to come and inspect them.
We have one guest. Oh, not a guest.
Kinda hanging out.
Marg is a regular, not a guest.
Yeah. Part of the crew. No public comments, I take it? Okay. Quote for new windows at the town hall. And we had two, right?
Yeah, so we looked into four, no, five different.
Yeah. Now I have one concern. One scope of the work is for six windows. And that's $7,600. And one is for three replacements. And that's $1,875.
Yeah, so I can speak to that.
Okay.
Heidi Eccleston, so Gloria did reach back out to Heidi at Hometown. And Heidi said that if you, she had it listed out per window, what it would be. She basically said it would be the same cost per window for the remainder of them.
Alright, so let's do this.
Yeah, divide that.
Right, divide $1,375 by three.
$1,375 divided by three, yep. And you gotta multiply it back by, to match the other one would be seven windows?
No. That may not be, here's what it is. Let me, let me give you some numbers. Three window replacements. So it's $1,375, install new windows, $500. So the total...
No, remove all of the old windows.
Right, so the total...
So you'd have to double that number.
There is no, nothing on the remove. Install new windows. So you have to, this is the total for three windows. This is the total, $1,875.
Yep.
So it's $1,875, twice, divided by three.
Multiply it back by, you said six total?
Six total, that's what this window is.
So it's just, I have four.
It's almost half price.
Yep.
Well, what's the quality of them windows versus the other one? That's my issue.
Well, in Cold River Enterprises, it's double glass with low E, full screens, optional bottom sash, lifting bar, eight light grids in both sashes. And any woodwork installed to finish the opening will be painted to match the existing trim. Price also includes securing any necessary permits. And here again, that was $7,600.
Did it mention a price for removal of the old ones? I mean, taking care of the old ones?
Just has a deposit of $2,500 will be due prior to ordering the windows. And Cold River Enterprises has insurance.
Well, the hometown construction bid is, I mean, half the price, so...
Half the quality windows or about the same quality window, you think?
You'd have to ask her what she's putting in. I mean, you know, you can tell what he's putting in. He's putting in Harvey's, which Harvey's a reputable company, no doubt about that, but...
I'm not a contractor or builder, so I don't know much about that part. Do they, what about installation value for his gas line and stuff like that?
Well, he's quoting, it looks like argon filled. I don't know what, ultimately what Heidi's quoting. You'd have to ask her. But even at that price, if you wanted to go with a little bit of a higher quality window, you're talking, you're still, you're still talking under...
With the hometown, you mean?
Yeah. Because you're talking around three grand movable room in there with the one that Heidi has compared to Cold River Enterprise.
Problem is, that's what the bid is. That's the bid right there, and that's what the issue was to me.
What do you mean?
Unless we table it and, cuz I believe these window replacement are gonna be towards late winter or spring.
Oh, it's gonna be spring. They're not gonna touch it now.
In that case, maybe I'd be doing more research on it for the quality of... Because this one here actually has...
Ask her to provide more details.
You want details on the one? So, I mean, what you, I'll go along with that if you wanna. As much as I hate to say we gotta table it again.
Right.
But table it for one more time and ask her for the specs on the windows.
Does it include, like, questions like, does it include screens? Like, the other one, like...
Yeah, cuz the other ones, it's got a lot of detail of what the windows are.
Cuz I could build you a double pane, iron window if you wanted it. Not saying that they're not quality.
Those are out there. Come with horses?
Good.
There can be, there can be quite a difference.
Back on the windows.
Katie, can we get in touch with Heidi? And...
Do that window, by the way.
Pardon?
That window she did do.
Years ago, didn't they do these other ones, too?
No.
She didn't do these others?
She did the Grange Hall.
I know she did that one, and she blocked that off at the same time.
Those are, a guy from Fairhaven did those. Who was that?
Taggart done it.
Taggart.
Did the other ones, that are...
He did all of us of them.
Marg ended up something about Grange Hall, what's the quality?
Well, Heidi did the Grange Hall ones.
What are the quality windows there?
Yep.
What is the quality goes from?
Actually, she said it would match this one, right?
I don't know. I know she had to give the wooden ones because it's historical. So she went above and beyond and did all that, so...
I'd open it, see what it...
I'm positive she said it was gonna match this one, but...
There's screens in it?
Yeah, there's screens. And I was just trying to see if there was a company name.
So them, with them, you don't need storms?
I don't know. There's no, if it was a Harvey, it would say Harvey. Harvey last, I knew used to say Harvey right on the locks. So I don't know what brand this is. But you can just ask her.
Alright, Kim.
Just ask her for the specs on the windows.
And description.
Will, I'm gonna put this, these bids back in, Katie, I'm gonna put these bids back in this envelope, I mean, holder.
So I'll second Cash's motion to table for one more meeting.
And my other thing is, bring up, with that being said, I think we oughta not let any more bids come in because we've...
No.
We've just played the...
You're between these two now.
Between these two.
I would agree with that.
Alright, so Rob, you're making a motion?
No, Cash made the motion and I seconded it, to table it. Next one. So January, whatever that is.
Yeah, next year.
Alright, so motion made, seconded. We've had some brief discussion, to table until we get a little bit more information. So all those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Okay. The next adventure is mowing goods. Rob, that knife is older than yours.
Sure, it probably is. Still works good though, doesn't it?
Yeah, my father gave it to me. Years ago, when I first began alignment. Looked it, looked like it's been...
Sharpened a few times?
Try and keep them with the envelopes. They were selling.
Lawn care maintenance.
It's cheaper.
Yeah.
Yeah, that's...
What's his, I can't read the letter.
I don't know.
That's the guy that used to do the...
Is he the one that used to do it from the south, from down like Bennington Way?
Oh, no, he's Dambie.
Yeah, okay.
Somewhere in Dambie.
Okay, yep. Lewis, that's right, okay. So he's the guy that was like, three years ago, before, before Timmy.
Is that, Rick, is that just for the ball fields, or?
This is just cemeteries. We don't have ball fields.
He was interested in submitting for the ball fields, but Katie let him know that that bid is not ready yet. And so when that bid, that spec sheet is ready, that she'll get in contact with him.
So this is predominantly then?
He worked for it. Can I have a pencil, though, cuz his math is wrong. His totals wrong.
What you got for a figure there?
He hadn't put a figure in.
I've got a pen, I just didn't wanna, I can write it on something separate. I was gonna write pen, write in pencil next to it what the rate numbers are.
I think so. I think so.
Just wanna make sure we're doing the right comparison here.
Just a hair.
Same as the...
I have a question for somebody that wants to answer this, and somebody has an open mind. I have each cemetery except for Wes Clarendon-Chippenhoke.
I know which bid you're talking about. So the gentleman who submitted that was only interested in doing the other ones and not Chippenhoke.
So...
We, the way that we specked that out was so that if people wanted to bid on only certain cemeteries, they could do that.
Double check my math.
Which would mean then you'd have to...
I'd rather it all go to one.
Kinda.
Well, that's...
We're gonna be round table discussion all night here, trying to figure out the neckels and dimes of...
This one's right, the math's right on this one.
Does he give you a total there?
Yeah, that's what I got there. Bid sheet.
Wes Clarendon, we don't know.
I'm gonna press it.
Let's do this. What is the size of the Chippenhoke Cemetery compared to this one here? Probably four times bigger?
Chippenhoke compared to this one?
Probably three times.
So probably three times.
I'll take this figure here, just for, even though he didn't bid on it, just for ballpark.
The only thing that's different about Chippenhoke is you've got that front section that they sometimes just weed whack.
Right.
And they've got the two fenced-in areas that you can only weed. So there's more weed whacking in Chippenhoke.
Yep.
So maybe like four times more with labor and everything, as far as...
Maybe. Yeah, I mean, cuz, cuz the weed whacking is definitely more labor. But personally, if somebody's not interested in all of them, I personally would say right now, you throw them out.
Yeah, I'd like to see them all with one contractor.
The thing is, we've advertised it that way, though, as a breakup, if wanted to be.
Yeah, I know.
We did?
Yes.
Well, we said that people, we did say that if people were interested in only certain ones, that they could bid that way.
Well, that's the figure it had. If I compare it to this one here, that's four times more.
It's same number. So in the pencil is the, is the correct total bid. This is what the actual bid is.
Well, that's what he'd be if I added, if I estimated.
Fully understood how it was.
Yeah.
Not that far off. We got a little bit, eight hundred bucks.
I really don't think it's fair that we... I'd like to see it all go one bidder, but if we advertise it that way, we need to...
Consider it, need to think about it.
The thing is, I did the equation on it, and with a comparison. And I don't know what the rest of mine are, but Bob's...
That's all it was with...
Comes right close to...
Was there anything else?
Ten million here.
We had that.
Would you say ten?
Ten one.
Insurance.
Yep.
If you're finding errors in placing...
He's done it before, so...
I personally am sure as far as invoice is gonna be correct, then, like...
How do you wanna do this, Mike? On the envelope, what the final is? What?
If there, if there are bids where the math is incorrect, like, that would be concerning to me as far as, are they gonna be invoicing correctly?
Let's see that one, Bob.
Figure on it?
Yeah.
Or do you wanna look at it first?
No, let's just put the figure on it.
No, I think it'd be better if we could just, all cemeteries mowed with one contractor.
But it wasn't, I don't think it's that way.
No, I know it wasn't. It'd be better if we could. No, I know it wasn't, uh, it'd be better if we could.
Don't want to do that if they wanted to team with somebody and do a split, and then, then two bid together.
Could do that. That's all? Okay.
What's this note for? Is that one?
No, I think. I don't know if I've seen that far.
Always.
We're all looking at it.
Yep. I don't know if I've seen this one. Or no, yeah, I have.
Well, we're still gonna go down this end table. Let's see that just one side. There's any more there, Robert?
Uh, not down here, I think we, I mean, we have total. Three, four, five, Bob's still got one.
I still got one here.
Six, we must have six total.
You always send three.
Smagging three.
Haven't seen that. Haven't seen that one. Probably that one there.
Look, where's the one you had, Rick?
That's the one.
Look back your way.
Just went back down.
I haven't seen three so far.
This one here, I don't think you've seen that one. The one where there was, they left one out.
Left one out.
You saw that one?
Maybe take that South Lehigh. And get a crew. Overhead. That's fully understandable.
Yep.
Did we, we haven't seen this one, have we?
Yeah, yeah, this one that I had here first.
Oh, this, this one you had here.
This is the first one I had. Seen them all now, down there.
Seen that one. Maybe I didn't see that one. Didn't see that one.
If we put them in order.
Seven fifteen.
That's the lowest one.
Haven't seen that one.
No.
You hadn't seen this?
Don't know the one.
Okay. Did you guys want to look at that?
I'll be this one as.
Saloner.
That one Harrington, wasn't it? What the hell is this?
Somebody wrote on that because he did not, he's not bidding on, uh, check them down though, because that math is. Marty, that's right, that's right.
It's too late now, probably should run some references down those people.
So yeah, there's no.
Well, we're looking at this for budget purposes too.
West Clarendon. No Wes Clarendon, not one at all, yeah.
Yeah, Megan, no different.
Per man hour. It's all within the tools and everything, chainsaws and.
Yeah, it's.
It's within the ballpark.
Yeah. I just want to do the lower for it to get the quality work.
That's the difference between a high and low.
We have the.
Quite significant.
I'm just trying to figure out if I know this person or not.
It's quite significant.
Might be.
Sometimes two, you know.
Is it?
Yeah.
Just jumped in and grabbed the lowest.
You pay the long price in the end sometimes.
Yeah, sometimes you don't.
And if we do look at the lowest, I'd like to look at it over again.
I believe one of, one of Johnson's.
All right. There's one, two, three, four, five, six bids. The top bid was fifteen seven hundred. Additional mowing or work would be fifty dollars per hour. The lowest bid is fifty three hundred dollars, but it's only five cemeteries. And there's thirty dollars per hour, anything extra. There's one bid for fourteen five, fifty five dollars an hour extra. Thirteen five, twenty two dollars per hour extra. Twelve thousand six hundred, forty five dollars per hour extra. Ten thousand nine hundred, thirty dollars per hour extra. All of those are all the cemeteries, there's only one bid that excluded Chippenhoke.
And that's estimating, estimating that that's X amount of mowings per season. It could be lower, it could be more.
Right.
Depending on.
That's why they put fifty hourly rate.
Well, no, but that's why it's an estimated twenty mowings per.
Oh, season.
We looked, when we were putting the sheet together, we looked at how many approximately it took last year. But due to rain or due to other circumstances, they may need to mow more or they may need to mow less, which is why they gave us a price per mowing.
Right.
For each of the cemeteries.
So if they mowed twenty two times, they get paid for twenty two times, but this proposes for twenty as an estimate.
As an estimate, because there's no way to tell whether you're going to need to mow.
And that's only fair on both parties.
Right.
If we have a dry spring, dry summer, we won't be mowing as much.
Now, who, who did this previous season?
Martel.
Okay. He did a really good job. He was the highest bid. Mike Weatherby was the lowest bid excluding one cemetery.
Which is the biggest cemetery.
Which is the biggest.
Which is the biggest, correct.
And I averaged it out to roughly what the other ones charged, and he'd be right up there.
Around twelve six.
About just over ten. Mike.
I like the job that this guy that has been doing it, but he unfortunately is a high bid. What did we pay last year?
I don't think he was high bid.
Martel?
I'm sorry, yes, he was.
We struggled, we struggled to get bids last year, but we did get two or three.
Right, and he wasn't high bid last year.
He wasn't high, he was kind of the middle last year.
What was his total last year? Did I ask you that?
What are these two bids here, Mike, just, just to look at?
Twelve six.
Because their, 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 um, hourly rate for private, or they're doing the cleanup and stuff is.
See, this is.
More reasonable or in line of.
This is Louis, he, he's done them before.
He did them before Tim Mumford took over.
Mm-hmm, okay, so you've experienced his.
Yeah, yeah, he, he, he took care of them before then. As long as his equipment was working.
Yeah.
It was good, we had a couple instances where his equipment broke down and we were kind of after him and trying to stay on top of it, but, but.
But he did come back to it.
Yep, as long as his equipment was good, we were all right, yep.
And that was this one here?
Louis?
That's the twelve, yeah.
Louis.
Who's got the lowest bid out there?
Um, it's Mike Weatherby.
No, but I mean with all of them in combined.
With all of them, the lowest is ten nine, um, which is.
Johnson.
Who is it?
Charlie Johnson.
Yep, that's Johnson.
Yeah.
Yeah, he does good job. He did Saint Bridges over in West Rutland. He lost it last year, but he'd been doing it for years.
Did a good job.
Yeah, he does Barbara Pratt's.
All right.
He has decent quality equipment apparently to.
He's got some nice fast John Deere's.
Is this the one that does the garbage root stuff?
Yes. His parents actually, they're from Mount Holly. Charlie's parents do the garbage.
Holly Johnson's grandson, I believe, isn't it?
Yeah, so it is.
Yeah, right there, okay.
So you got what you paid him last year?
Yeah, which you have to, you have to kind of look at it, we had like a month of last fiscal year, and then the rest of the summer is in this fiscal year.
Mm-hmm.
So then now we're asking, and he currently will hold the, the contract until June thirtieth.
Yeah, yeah.
So if you take fiscal nineteen was forty six, forty five, fiscal twenty seventy seven, thirty, so that for the summer, it was twelve thousand three hundred and seventy five dollars. But that first month also included the cleanup.
Yeah, he was.
Is that built it in at three seventy five, twelve?
That did not include the brush cleanup though, the extra.
That didn't include it.
That was extra.
That was just the initial spring cleanup, which would be expected of whoever does it anyways.
Figured out how much work it is, and that's why he's on top of the list.
It's a lot of work.
It is a lot of work, and actually.
A lot of dedication, it really is.
Yeah, it's, it's common to hear from folks, um, Katie knows, she's called a lot of different folks, last year Cindy and I called a lot of different folks to try to get people to put bids in, and people don't want to because they are so much work, they're saying it's not worth their time, so.
A lot of it's around the headstones, that's where the killer is.
Yeah, and you, you get some of these outfits too, they'll come in, I know of a case of a different cemetery where they hired a group and they've done an awful number on stones.
Yeah. They use the, um.
Unbelievable.
Real weed whackers, you know, they had the wire thing, and that's what chips the stones up. The other ones with the plastic they go through, they did, you know, where I'm out with it, you gotta keep changing it.
Oh, yeah. Yep.
Well, the, there's two, two bids from people who have done it already, Martel was fifteen seven, and he's fifty dollars per hour extra. And Mason is twelve six, and he's forty five dollars per hour. And both of those individuals do all the cemeteries.
Johnson.
Johnson's in front of him.
Johnson nineteen, nineteen, or ten nine was it?
Ten nine and thirty dollars.
Thirty an hour.
Thirty an hour?
Mm-hmm.
So.
Also, I'll stick my neck out, and I'll make a motion, we go with the Johnson at ten nine, thirty dollars an hour.
Is there a second for discussion?
I'll second it for discussion.
All right. Is there any discussion?
Is, I have a question. Is there such thing as approve a second one in case that first one neglects or something happens and can't do it, or so we can be ready to roll? Without, I mean.
I would say we would have to start over.
Have to start over.
Yeah.
You're saying if he, if he denies it?
If something happens, that there's help or in myself, I was doing for another backup. Would it?
Yeah, that'd be tough to do.
I didn't know if we could build it into here, that we'd go with a second choice if something happened.
Most of, so this might be something for us to remember for our bid sheet next year. Most places would build it in and say it's on the contractor's responsibility to subcontract if you are unable to fulfill your duties.
But that puts it out of our league of.
Puts it out of our hands.
Who they, but who they can hire.
Yeah.
And that, and if that's the case, if they got a high enough bid, they could sub out somebody that was a lot cheaper just to do it. Which I don't agree with that.
Yeah.
I'd, I'd be a little leery of doing that, uh, I think you want to go with the one, if you get into a problem, I guess then you just have to go out and look at who you could get.
Well, then I would say in whatever contract you draw up, you're gonna have to have it in black and white, that if the contractor is unable to fulfill his duties, he has to notify the towns, that the town can, if you, if you want it on us, you've got to have it in there, black and white, that we're gonna be the ones to find a replacement.
Because as it stands right now, any of them can walk.
Well, sure, that's any risk you run in any of them.
I would think the rest of them would have their schedule already made out for the year.
I mean, this, you gotta remember, this is July one. To June thirty.
All right, there's been a motion made and seconded. We've had some discussions, is there any further discussion? All right, and this is, uh, Johnson Lawn Care.
Can I just see that one? Make sure the math's right.
Any further discussion? All right, then, all those in favor of hiring, uh, Johnson Lawn Care? Please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Katie, I'm gonna walk these over to you. And you can.
Looks like you're doing the lawn.
Just to do more quick enough, right?
But we're gonna notify the rest of those folks, tell them that.
And for our current one, we just need to reiterate that he does have the contract until June thirtieth, so that there's not misunderstanding of the fact that.
Yeah.
Right?
And also with the one that's been awarded to, that they don't start until July thirteenth.
Exactly.
Well, Martel wouldn't care.
Good job. Um, RRPC appointment, alternate Gail Lacaze.
Make a motion that we appoint Gail Lacaze. Making motion that we appoint Gail Lacaze as the alternate to the Rutland Regional Plan, Planning Commission?
Second.
Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all is in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed? So it was, Rob was number one. Who's second that?
Robert.
There's new business.
You've got to sign it.
I do?
Yep, looks that way.
I signed it for, uh. Get that right now. Uh, let's see. Schedule twenty twenty select board meetings. Everybody take a look at that?
I'm looking at it right now.
Is it on email?
No. Just pass it around and we'll, we'll bring, we'll discuss it later.
All right, this is good.
I don't know what to do with you guys with fair.
That's what I was figuring out.
Is there anything you need to write?
Still on Mondays? Still on Mondays?
Yes, that's your second for Monday.
What are the August dates?
August tenth and twenty four.
Tenth, twenty four is before and after. A week.
Yep, it's before and after. So we're okay. Doesn't fall on fair week this year.
Well, you don't get busy down there, do you?
So really the only holiday we had to mess with was Memorial Day got moved to the Wednesday, right?
Right.
Yep. And it doesn't hit Veterans Day this year. So.
I'd like to have a motion?
Oh, I intend, or I intend, I'll make a motion to accept our select board meeting calendar.
Schedule?
Schedule, calendar for two thousand twenty as presented.
I'll second it.
Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? All right, there's better roads invoicing. I have no idea what that was about, do you?
We received a notification from Devon from Rutland Regional Plan Commission about sign off.
On our mileage?
It's our actual in kind of the town share of the grant that got done for Road Culver Inventory MRGP. And that we met the grant by, I think it was like eighty five dollars. We had to come up with almost fourteen hundred dollars. I don't remember exact figures. And we just barely went over.
Rutland Regional makes out pretty good on it, don't they?
They do okay. Say that loud enough, Robert.
Well, I mean, come on, let's be honest here. Yeah.
They, they had a lot of input. I will give them credit for that. They, actually I thought it'd be higher than that.
So we have to pay one thou, thirteen eighty six to match?
Yeah, we worked that out. Our pay was in kind and that's how we, we kept track of our in kind expenses.
Okay, so the only.
It's actually a wash.
The only other question that I have, none of this was under our previous assistance time? She didn't have any time in this?
No.
No?
No.
Okay. Just asking because it's only our current assistants on here, that's why I'm wondering.
That's right.
Okay.
Actually it was two assistants prior.
Heather?
Heather was the one who secured this grant.
She secured it, but.
And then.
And then.
Janet, nothing happened with it?
No, it didn't. No. And that's where I was being newness, everything on loose ends of.
So basically.
It was quite an interesting case for me, which I'm glad I went with them and learned what they were looking for and.
So our match is in kind. We don't actually have to transfer any money?
No money. The only money is the in kind that was provided of our services, my services. Other ones on there, um, even using the town truck for you.
Yeah, I saw that. Town trucks on here.
For transportation around.
So this is just to close it out?
Yes.
So.
I think.
I'll make a motion that the select board chair sign off on the. Yeah, Better Backroads program close out to the grant.
Is there a second?
I'll second.
Bob Ken?
Whatever.
How do I get conflict here?
Yeah.
Get it down.
All right, motion made, seconded. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed?
Can I back up a second to our schedule for two thousand twenties meetings? I was thinking January sixth was going to be our first meeting. No.
No.
It'd be the first Monday. That's thirteen. Yeah, I told somebody wrong the other day. We'll have to reach out to him, Kyle.
Yeah, there's, there's two things. There.
That's your window bid. Your window bids.
Forgot something. What'd you forget? Thank you.
I'll wait till Katie's back in her seat.
So she can type. Well, I didn't know if you were hurrying to get through Monday.
It's midnight tonight, is it?
This next will be quick.
Looking over but to crying. See who's playing.
It's football.
Your sister.
Dallas came that close.
Who's plays intimate football?
All right, uh, Heidi, do you have anything you'd like to report?
Packers and Vikings.
Losers.
Nothing?
We're finishing the budget after this meeting.
Yay!
Write that in there.
That's all I got.
Cash told me to do that.
Merry Christmas.
Bob, do you have any concerns?
Do our sister.
No, just wish everyone a happy holiday season.
Do you have any concerns?
I just want to wish everybody happy holidays. Just remember the rules of the road. Drive safe this holiday season.
I'd like to thank Bob once again for bringing in some Merry Christmas cards. Kind of does look like me a little. You know, Cash and. Everybody, Merry Christmas out there. Katie, did you have anything you want to bring up?
Um, today me and Cash wrapped up all of the paperwork for Blood from April, so we sent that on to, um, Eric, so he's going to finish that for us.
Perfect.
Rob?
I think you should have red suit tonight.
Now I'm going to tell you a story. I went to Adams, had a musical down to Rutland Trail. And I was called up on the stage and had a, a, uh, red hat they gave me and.
Really?
Yeah.
Wow.
I wasn't going to.
Go there?
Yeah.
Rouge on the cheeks.
No, Merry Christmas to everybody and, uh, we'll see you all at this point in the new year, so.
Same to all, Merry Christmas, Happy New Year. We'll see you next year. Uh, just to let you know, Cash, I did contact the, uh, Sheriff's Department deputy about the snow plowing across the roads. So I told you I'd do that last week and I did. There might have been a response on that because it's, one place has already corrected or two places.
Speaking of which, there was one on this last little bit of snow, South Creek Road. Pretty substantial. Was that, was that, take, okay.
Nope, that wasn't taken care of.
That wasn't one of them?
No, just an addition. Get one side of town, get cleaned up.
There was actually, when I drove by, a pile of snow on the road, so. No, like pushed out into the road and just lifted the plow and drove away, so.
I, I of course have no comment on that. Uh, I entertain a motion to adjourn this meeting.
No move? Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Anyone opposed?